Your legal fees go through the law. Because I'll be getting emails from Shelley saying, is such and such motion, does it require a second, is it debatable, blah, blah, blah. My personal view is unless you are a large body, forty or more people, I would suggest you not do it. Your code does implicate it, so it is already on your books. Frankly, any member can make a point of order if you feel that's appropriate. But I would suggest not having, not turning it into each trustee has a book and you all are spending your meeting pointing to page forty-two, clause six. It gets very burdensome and tends to ruin things in meetings.
Well, Robert's Rules only comes into play when you're not following your ordinance anyways. So we have, very specifically tells us how to run our meeting. And this looks pretty respectful and pretty organized, so I think we've got to give the ordinance a chance going forward.
You agree with that?
No.
I can order one.
But I think we'll raise our hand and be called on instead of multiple people talking and stuff at the same time. It's only fair to each other, so.
The reason for clarification that I brought it up was that they were including electronic, such as Zoom and the telephonics, people calling in, that they had some changes based on that for the first time in their history prompted by COVID. And I thought that that would be interesting to look at it and that if there is some Robert's Rule point of orders, that the trustees should be semi-familiar with how things run or how they go. I think there's nothing wrong with familiarizing yourself with it. Never in that statement did I intend that we should sit here with it and conduct our business going line by line on Robert's Rules or just that there was procedural questions or a question of order.
Well, I didn't mean to.
Yes, this and no, I wouldn't.
But the Robert's Rules of Order.
Looking through a Robert's Rule order book. But it does have some new information that's very interesting.
But the Robert's Rules of Order that's adopted is 1990, not today.
Yes, and that's why I brought it up.
That's why we have to look at 1990.
Because they have a new volume that just came out in the year of 2020, so just that that is something that.
But that doesn't, our ordinance doesn't, that, we don't just automatically upgrade. It has to, the day this ordinance is adopted is the rules we use. We don't use the new rules unless we re-adopt the ordinance. So the automatic, every time a new rule comes out, a new ordinance or new Robert's Rules comes out, you've got to go back to the day the ordinance was adopted for what you run by for Robert's Rules.
I'm surprised you understand that, but I'm also mentioning that a new volume came out and I wasn't sure if the trustee chef was aware that a new volume had come out. So I'm aware of everything you're saying.
Couple of them have.
And this one is including some electronic submissions. I think that that changes it from the old Robert's Rule of Orders volume that came out. And I think it might be worth a look.
All right. So anybody want to look at it? They can, if they want to make a subcommittee, we can. Yeah, kind of. Doesn't hurt to look at it, but.
So is a copy in the office or?
Well, not new Robert's Rules. So, and there's been multiple. I mean, everybody, just because there's a new version, you don't just change every time, but there might be something in a new version that does apply. So it'd be good to look at.
They do change, every version changes as well, Robert said.
What are we on, ten?
There's kind of these small changes.
I think it's version thirteen now, right?
Twelve.
Twelve? We're on nine, so.
So do, would we need to, so I think, Mary, are you asking that we update the ordinance to include the more modern standards of communication?
I think that's one way to look at it. I mean, I'm just one of seven. I think giving it a gander since we're including Zoom and we are now YouTube-ing, we might want to see what Robert's Rule has to say about it from the big guys that do it, you know.
I like that.
Maybe there's something adoptable or noteworthy in there. The man who wrote the article that I read about it was out of his mind and had served in the government here in the state for many, many years. And he just felt it was very important that people observe it. So that's why I brought it up. But I wasn't sure if everybody knew that it had come out, because I didn't know before his article it was published.
And if there's something that pertains to what we need based on what you're thinking, doesn't necessarily have to be Robert's Rules either, you can make an ordinance. So there's many ways to do it.
Will you have other communities that have already adjusted electronic meetings?
Well, most of the electronic meetings done by ordinance, not by Robert's. The main one is Zoom and allowing trustees to appear by phone or other media technology. And I've probably done three or four of those ordinances in the last year. I will tell you that the main sticking point for most communities is the concern that they wanted to allow trustees to appear by phone if they were traveling on vacation, had a medical emergency, that sort of stuff. There was a concern though that some could abuse it if there was a topic that was controversial or a vote would be difficult, that some trustees would hide behind electronic type of stuff and to avoid it. That was the only phone revealing concern I had heard, but like I say, four or five communities that I represented have passed that sort of thing.
Are you saying that you can't vote when you're Zooming?
No, you can. The issue was that there was, the communities that passed it when it explicitly stated in their ordinances that the trustees could appear electronically.
Okay. But our trustees electronically have always weighed in.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, we've always voted in. I don't know if anybody hasn't.
No, no, they would, they would appear electronically, they would deliberate electronically, they would vote electronically, no.
But is there, is there a concern about doing that if you don't have an ordinance that says you can?
I think the communities that did do that, the concern was it wasn't explicitly stated. And so they wanted it just explicitly clear that they can do that.
Okay.
Because some communities did also have ordinances that said with the permission of the village president. And they didn't like the idea that, well, I needed permission to appear. They wanted it as a matter of record.
Right, okay.
And since we're recodifying the ordinance, it wouldn't be a bad idea to give everything a look and make sure that we're doing it with the suite, because we're still weighing in on a recon with the professionals doing it.
All right. So everybody, this, I mean, this is what this, so.
Yeah.
Is that all still part of the electronic meeting part? All that run together?
Yeah, I didn't know that they were going to be separated.
Okay, okay.
They were all.
All right. Social media, Mary.
And then the social media, I thought maybe just the social media policies and social media also of that same character that, you know, what is, they were saying eighty-six percent of all people get their information or are on the social media by eight AM or something like that. Maybe that there should be a look see into behaviors and communications when you're being, when you're representing yourself as a trustee for the village. And I called Lincoln Municipalities to ask them what they have, and oddly enough, they're working on that right now. They, they don't have anything on a social media policy yet. They're developing it. They've had some articles in the past, but there are some places that do have it. And I thought maybe that would be something that we'd want to look into.
Again, for what it's worth, I obviously deal with this all the time. I'll tell you, the Attorney General's opinion is that if you communicate by any electronic means, social media, et cetera, as a trustee concerning village business, that is a document that is subject to the public documents law, public retention law. So if you, you have an obligation to store that and make it available. For that reason, I always advise my folks, don't communicate on, about village business through social media, because it's too difficult to retain, you know, to keep that. There is software that does that, third-party places do it. I have a couple of communities that have enrolled in that. It's very expensive, but it will do it. The other thing that is an issue to think about if you do do it, social media has a, I don't do it, so I'm not the expert on it, but it has a very interactive thing. You know, you can either just broadcast out to the public or you can allow the public to sort of make comments and that sort of thing. If you do the latter and allow comments for First Amendment purposes, it becomes a public forum, which means once you start allowing comments, you can't.
Take away.
Somebody wants to spell it off on abortion, white supremacy, whatever, you can't, you can't stop them, because it's now a public forum. So for that reason, I also advise people, if you want to do the social media, you know, many police departments have Facebook accounts, that sort of stuff, make it a one-way street. You can put information out, but don't allow the public to comment on it, because you don't want to create that public forum.
So is that a point, like personal Facebook commenting too? Like if, if a single trustee is talking about just the community in general or something like that, could he, that can't create a public forum.
Only to the extent that the discussion, you're, as a trustee, you're discussing village business. And admittedly, that gets sort of wonky, because I get, oftentimes you'll have a trustee that will comment about, oh, you know, things like just general, you know, we should grow as a community. And is he speaking as a personal citizen or is he speaking as a trustee? And that, that gets very cloudy. So my personal recommendation is if it's anything related to the village or conceivably be deemed the village business, send it as an email through the village server. That way the village can archive it. You don't have to retain it personally, that sort of thing. You know, on Facebook, that sort of stuff, stick to just personal business.
Any more on that?
So are we interested in it or not? So the last one was we're just, F-one and two, we're tabling that until the next or we're postponing it.
We didn't actually do any action. Somebody was going to look at it and just kind of look at it and see if they want to bring it back before the board.
So tabling it till the next meeting?
There was no motion to table. Nobody said anything about it. They were just going to.
And then for this one, same thing?
Yep.
Leave it open and discuss it again?
Right. The other one is library, Wisconsin statute fourteen dot one eight withdrawal.
Forty-three.
No, forty-three point one eight.
Is there contact around this one?
Why was that placed on?
Mary wanted it placed on. And, and just so we know furthermore going forward, during, during our business regarding to be brought before the village board, if somebody wants something on the village board, please bring it up. But it takes two board members to put it on the agenda from now on, unless it's an emergency item, and I'll do it. So if you want it on the agenda, somebody else also has to agree with you to make the adjustment.
You want it to be in a motion?
Yep.
Does that include all of us equally?
Equally, everybody. Unless it's an emergency thing and I agree with it, I can put it on the agenda, but not everyday stuff, because it takes the board to put something on the agenda, not, so. They got to, the board has to be able to want to take it up. So, and that's the only fair way to do it.
So I brought this up because I was very concerned about an email from a trustee that said that we should consider forty-three one eight withdrawing the library board as a solution to some of the problems that are occurring in the communications between the village board and the library board. And I didn't agree with that. I felt it was very aggressive and it didn't have any explanation of why. And so if this is going to be a non-issue, then we needn't discuss it. But if that trustee wants to talk about the idea behind suggesting forty-three eighteen, I felt that it was important to make that transparent, because it does, it, because the village just needs the two-thirds vote in order to withdraw the library without their consent, that to me is, that's really teetering on a trust issue. And bringing it up is something that I think teeters on that power play. I've got more power, look what I can ultimately do to you if you don't, you know, if, if we can't get this all in line, then we'll do this. But it is two-thirds vote that could make that happen by the village board. And like I said, I think that that is them fighting word. And I think that it should be discussed openly if this is something that anybody is thinking would be a solution to the current trust issues and communication issues we're experiencing with the library board. I wholeheartedly disagree, of course, with withdrawing the library board from South Central.
Does anybody want to discuss doing this? I didn't think it was put out there to do it. I thought it was put out there as an option if the library wanted it, is the way I took it. But I have no interest in doing this. I don't know if anybody else does or not, no, so.
But if you read about it, it's not the library that decides it. So that's why I felt that it was.
But I think it's important to support the library and so. It's not an issue, let's move on.
Mitch, will you need me any longer?
No, I, no, not at all. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you, Bill. Happy to be with you.
Thank you.
All right. Discussion action on street use application from Hill, Hobo Hilly Hundred Bike Race, twenty-eight, twenty twenty-one.
Yes, so hopefully everybody's got their application in here, but this has been an annual event up until we got hit by the flood. So they haven't, we've been back in the area and they want to do this again. They typically have come through the community and stop at community parks for their breaks. They have several races that they do across the state of Wisconsin. You should have received a map in your hard copy package that contains all scans. But, yeah, so just to bring it through, because they're wanting to close down Park Street, there's a small portion is the reason that the board is seeing this. Obviously, park reservations, you guys don't really get to go through that, but the board does approve the street closure.
Yeah, so first question is, I guess, are we going to need police support or anything like that?
They have not in the past. If we've had a deputy on duty, they typically go in and just make sure things do run smooth, but they don't request it.
Not with extra charge or anything?
No, and what happens.
We should, we should be requesting it, because they have in turn used our deputy a couple of times, or they ended up being there and they shouldn't have.
Well, so here's what happens when it comes to races of this nature and this size, they have to do their application into Dane County Sheriff's Department. So Dane County Sheriff will actually assign somebody at their level and will get the permission from the county authorizing that. We won't see it closer to it, you know.
But we don't want our officers having to do it, is what I'm saying.
Right.
Because they've gotten stuck in this. They need to have somebody at.
They need to be required to hire their own, right.
And so, I mean, they're, we, they're saying none here, that they're not going to use any, but I think we should require one deputy, them to have one police officer there, because the intersections do get pretty, crazy.
I'm surprised that they're saying none, because they actually.
They've tried that, they've done it all the time.
Let's not just, okay, let's do one at a time. Mary, what were you going to say?
Oh, go ahead and finish.
No, it's.
They actually do use a partner, because I've seen them doing it.
Usually they contract their own, you're right.
Right.
But I don't know if they did, I don't.
They'll see, they do it closer to the event date. This is in front of us to close down a portion of Park Street for them to come through. So this doesn't deal with police at this point.
What's that?
What's that? The fee, they usually have, it was a hundred and eighty dollars and then a fifty dollar deposit. Reservation fee is one eighty, security deposit fifty, so it's almost two hundred and thirty dollars, that's for the park. We have not typically charged for a closure of a street in the past.
So, another question.
Go ahead.
They are using East Street too, I believe, or is it Center or East? And they go up through Madison? So why are they only asking for a closure of Park Street?
I think it's just for when they get off and do breaks and do lunch. They're going to close it, they're going to fill it up.
Yeah, because they come in.
Yeah, they come up and they go down to Madison.
Go ahead, Mary.
Have they ever closed in the past? I thought they just used kind of the parking lot as a designated area, but I don't think the roads have closed.
No.
It's just basically they're going to be on it, is the way I understood that, so it could be closed.
Yeah, and I don't see the closures. This is a street use.
Yeah, because, I don't think there's anything to close it.
And then are we going to put signs up that say no parking, because I know that in the past, to make room for.
No, that is, that's not what we've done.
There is no parking on Park Street.
Yeah. On our Park Street.
But not on this part.
They only want the Call Road Park Street part?
Correct. They won't be using the Park Street between Center and Mills.
Right.
So they'll come into town off of Highway fourteen, down Call Road, and take a left on Center Street towards Madison. So they will not be coming towards Main Street, Mill Street.
Does anybody have a problem with this happening?
No, I did want to say one thing though, it's kind of the same, same motion there. The Parks Committee has been trying to do grand opening for the grandstand and we're talking August. So throwing it out there, this is the end of August, it might, I don't know if it could double up, get more people coming up to Blackhurst and stuff.
Yeah, if you bring it back up with Parks, it might be a good time to.
Mm-hmm. There's also vendors, I don't know if we want to shoot up to, you know, Shoebox does their frat test, I don't know if we want to bring them in.
Well, we can't really talk about that right now, because this is on, but.
Okay, that's all right.
But yeah, I think, I think that'd be a good thing to bring up.
Okay.
Absolutely.
I was just thinking, since Peter's here at the gateway, what a great way to promote.
Yeah.
At that, okay, never mind.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt.
We should bring that up again.
Yep, absolutely.
Should we vote on that now for it to appear in the future at an appropriate time?
Well, it's not on the agenda, so we really can't bring it up.
Oh, that's right.
We can't talk about it.
I'll bring it up with them.
I mean, at the end.
Please do, and then bring it back, because that'd be awesome. So I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Well, are we concerned at all about state comments about not having any traffic control? Should we make them amend this?
They got to put it into Dane County Sheriff's Department to help with the traffic. That's done separately, it doesn't come through the village, it goes straight through Dane County Sheriff closer to the event. And then they coordinate that stuff up there.
So the word none doesn't leave us in some sort of a tangle?
No, it does not.
Okay.
They, they will have cops at the intersections.
Right, they always have that.
They don't need arms.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, got it.
They should not.
It may end up being one of ours though, right? But not on our dime.
No, they have to hire it separate, so it wouldn't be on our dime.
Yeah.
Correct.
I don't think that they quantify that as a special event for, especially if I'm team from Dane County.
I hope they're not bringing them up for that.
No, no.
It's a wrong show for it.
All right, I'll make a motion, we go ahead and approve it.
One second.
Okay, motion, and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Thank you. I'd like to just see these guys come back.
Discussion action on home talent temporary beer license for twenty twenty-one.
Yep, and with bikers, our home talent team is here and up to start playing again. They've brought in a schedule of games and as in the past, they sold beer at the concession stand, so this is their application. It's temporary, because it's only for just a few months versus a whole year like our other applicants. So this is basically renewal, they've done this every year, other than the last couple of reconstructions.
So these two are the ones asking for the license?
Yeah, well, no, the operators are already done, because they had a two-year operator's license, and that was for Larry Call and Renee Bratton. Those are not changing and they don't expire until next year. So the operators are already set and done.
This is just the license to serve the alcoholist, not the operator.
Right, and Holly Olson is still helping, her address is, is, not on the application you have, but she's still helping, she's transitioning everything over to them.
I have a little approval.
Okay, Terry and Scott, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Discussion action on yield sign on Blue Mountain Street.
I'm leaving that up to the app.
Or starting up Parks Police, want to take this or act them or?
Oh, this is, this was already brought up.
So it's been brought up one time, I just got prices, I think is where we were at, two hundred and fifty bucks per signage, Olson out.
For both, or anything? Two hundred and fifty bucks?
Yep.
Total? Wow, okay.
Add a new yield sign?
Or two, what's that? Two, yeah, been being two yield signs.
So it's, it's an uncontrolled intersection, so nobody really knows where it's at or by the, by the police station in the shoebox.
Well, they should know if they know how an uncontrolled intersection works, but you know.
I saw a licensed there and it's still pulling in front of me.
I mean, if that helps anything, I, I would suggest that we do it, then there's a really active anything, but it's not being.
So there's been one incident, and that was more of a person just cut the corner type thing, and.
Oh, I think the other one was.
And the other one, the other one is just something, you know, so. But, so I don't, there's really been any other documented occurrences there.
It is uncontrolled intersection.
Uncontrolled.
Gone through police, it's gone through Public Works.
Yeah, it's gone through all the committees, so I'd make a motion that we complete permission.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Discussion action regarding village board minutes from four thirteen.
I have Catherine to go.
So I did have a question about this, not necessarily the boardman itself, but now that we are putting stuff on YouTube, are we approving that as well officially through this motion to approve the minutes?
No, the YouTube video is direct from here, there's no approval. There is no legal requirement for us to have the full video.
Okay.
Legal requirement is approving this.
It's the paper, that is.
Written document, contained, I don't know.
Did anybody have any concerns on the minutes?
Yes, I have a correction.
Okay.
Under five E, I think that it doesn't give the full story, and so my correction is here, and I can send that in to Shelley or Danny or whoever needs to go through that.
I think the boards should hear what it is, determine if that's relevant to the minutes.
Of course, it doesn't have to exact.
Right, if the intent, if the intent is changing.
But it doesn't add to the whole story, so somebody reading it isn't getting the full story. I realize that there's a part on there of, that's very, that explains Shelley's point, but doesn't really comment as to the reason for the email. We didn't have the email in front of us at that meeting to refer to. Nobody asked for the waiver that I brought in.
Aye.
So it needs to be.
Go ahead, sure.
James asked what section?
What section?
I'm assuming.
Five E, oh.
Five, yeah.
The, the entire discussion action concerning those trustee and Scott behavior. So since it's got my name on it and it went into greater detail than that, I think that we should add these points to it. And I'd be happy to send that out and then we can just vote on that next time after you read it, but.
We can vote on it next time, huh, yeah.
Are we going to do this every meeting? Because every meeting that has changed is the intent.
Shelley, are you weighing in in an unbiased way?
Let's keep going here. So what we're saying is we'll do this, we'll look at it. Go ahead.
I was, I did watch the meetings, but I think the purpose of the minutes is just to summarize what happened in the meeting. I mean, you can go back and point and corner point every single.
And we're not going to do that.
But our meeting minutes would be eighteen pages long.
Right. Yeah, and we're not going to do that. But for this one instance, I think we should at least read what she has. That's all, so.
I found some things to be missing.
That doesn't mean I'm going to agree or not, but.
That they're important to include.
And, and we don't even have to adopt it, but let's at least read it, so.
So we need to make a motion to table it till next time?
Yep.
Okay, so I'll make a.
Postpone it, because then it will come up at the next meeting.
Postpone, okay. So I'll make a motion to postpone proving the minute four thirteen twenty twenty-one until the following board meeting.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Mine.
Okay, want to oppose? Okay.
When, are we going to do these in writing? When are we going to do these in writing?
I can send them, probably not tonight.
Either the calendar email or?
Oh, email?
Yeah.
Well, they'll have to go to Shelley.
Email to Shelley, Chicken Distributor. Okay. All right. Discussion action on treasure and financial reports, March twenty twenty-one.
Okay. Your treasurer's report is through the month of March. At this point, we're sitting with two point five million in all accounts. I want you to note that our electric utility, our cash position is in the red. In our village checkbook, if you look under electric, that five hundred account is sitting at four hundred and eighty-six thousand in the red. I am concerned about that. Last year at this time, we were coming out of the red. The debt we took out to repay what the general fund has been paying the sewer and electric bills was for a million dollars to have the electric pay the village back that money. And we were getting out of that hole until we hit with COVID. Our electric annual PFC report has been finalized, entered, and we do show an overall ten percent loss on the electric side this past year. The PFC will be looking very hard at this as we get ready to prepare a rate case study that will go in this fall for next year. Just keep note of that. I know people are complaining about their utility bills. However, we got some digging out we still have to do for years of not having those rates adjusted appropriately. Going along on the treasurer's report, March debt payments have been made at this point. We had the park loan of eighty-five thousand, electric and sewer debt loan payment of sixty-four thousand, and a fire truck loan payment of fifteen thousand. So about a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars in debt has been paid in the month of March. If we go in and start looking at our revenue and expense reports that follow behind it, these are through the month of April where we should be at approximately thirty-three percent of our budget. The general fund doesn't usually get to hit those percentages until a little later. I think I bring that up every month as we start getting our quarterly transportation aid done. But the general revenues are sitting at twenty-two percent with expenses at twenty-eight percent. In this, the Wisconsin surplus funds have hit. That was the truck sale and the items that Matt put out. And those were, we received monies at about thirty-two thousand eight hundred dollars for those items. And on the expense side, the public works equipment is over. It's about ten thousand over budget, but we knew that was going to happen and those surplus funds help offset that expense above and beyond budget. Our audit, while it's in a draft state of the audit with the auditors, we'll know more on getting any carryover funds brought over probably within the next month. So hopefully I'll have a resolution at June's meeting for those items. Our electric utility, the revenues are sitting at thirty percent with expenses at twenty-nine percent. Water revenues are at thirty-two percent with expenses at about twenty-six percent. Sewer revenues about thirty percent with expenses at fourteen percent. The other thing I want to bring up on our financials is I have been working with Ellers. I mentioned our debt payments a little bit ago. At June's meeting, they will do a presentation in front of this board on refinancing our existing debt with interest rates at an all-time low right now. We have some availability to take advantage of that and redo some of our debt levies for our taxpayers. But they'll also, they've also been taking a look at that electric substation funding for that. They're going to present a proposal on either rolling that in as a general obligation debt or a revenue debt, which I believe the PFC will support the revenue debt for them. I don't think the PFC will support it going in general debt and I wouldn't want it that way. So just know our June meeting will have a presentation by Ellers and possibly a resolution to refinance some of our debt. Again, I mentioned our annual PFC reports are being submitted. The electric has been done. Water will go in by the end of this week. And I will be reviewing both of those reports with the Public Works Committee at our next meeting to discuss some of the things that we're seeing there. So that is all I have for your financials right now.
Anybody got any questions on financials?
I do have a question.
Okay.
Did somebody else say? I do have a question. David Stansfield did that report and I got a copy of that and I'm just confused about the history. This happened before, obviously before I was a trustee. But we took out, is it correct that we took out a loan for a million dollars? And then on top of it, we had a fund of a million dollars and now we're in the red?
Uh, no, some of his history is not exactly complete. So when I first started here with the village, we probably did have a surplus fund in the electric utility. I don't know what that exact amount was, but when I came aboard, the PFC had ordered the village to pay back Wisconsin Heights School District over three hundred thousand dollars. So that on top of the embezzlement that occurred by the former clerk, we had no surplus funds in that electric utility when I arrived. The loan for the million dollars, as I mentioned a little while ago, the village general fund had been paying the bills for the electric utility and the sewer utility for a number of years. And the PFC that regulates the electric and water utilities does not allow for that. We're supposed to have our rates established at a level where it can support itself. And that is not happening. Even with the rate increases we have seen, we're still not there to bring that up and out. We were getting close. I mean, and that was also in discussions with our Vanguard utility and trying to hold their expenses down. And I already had a discussion with Sean about this stuff today too. But we had to pay back the village general fund, which is why we went out for that borrowing, Mary. That million dollars was a share between the water, or the sewer and the electric. That was ordered by the Public Service Commission. We had to pay it back.
We paid back one million dollars?
Yes. And we're still in the same position. Where village general fund is paying the electric bills. We're not making enough on the electric side yet.
So am I, for, for electric, am I understanding the COVID rules properly where the village is not allowed to shut off electric? You can't punish anybody and then, but we are still expected to pay?
Yep.
So.
You know, one of those ways of like instead of controlling those electric costs, and then I hate to say it, but you know, we have to have Vanguard, I mean, there are five hundred to six hundred thousand dollars of that budget. We really need them to work outside of our village for a while. So more maizel work versus Black Earth so we can really work on controlling that expense and bringing us back up and out. It's part of it. Part of what can help us. And we had to do that when I first came in and did the assessment. We asked Vanguard to please step out for a little while. And I hate to do that because we have a lot of maintenance that we have to do, but.
We have a lot of rural line that like maizel doesn't have and that's costly.
Yeah, we do.
Without a lot of income generation.
Eight miles. I'd raise it was eight miles.
Yeah, roughly eighty or eighty-four miles of rule for the Black Earth utilities. Unfortunately, we just don't have the load of PI, DCC or no.
You know, with COVID, but you know, every time you raise rates, people get more efficient too. So it.
And solar, solar is a big part of it too.
Solar.
Our solar generation is reducing that usage on that side.
And solar is great, but it also takes away from your, I mean, infrastructure costs and you still cost the same to supply the power. So there's double edged sword there too, so.
And then if I'm understanding some of the figures, that theft though is paid back of, except for thirteen thousand, right?
No, no. Our former clerk is still paying back. They have to pay the village back first before they even start to pay Vanguard back on that. Federal amount still owed.
Is there any way that we could find out what that amount is? Because according to the clerk's report or whatever it is that was attached, it shows thirteen thousand.
What reporter?
I, let's just wait. So that is, I mean, it's part of the treasurer's, it's not really part of this treasurer's report. So I think that you guys should get together and discuss that secondary instead of during this, so.
Okay.
And then you can get all the information you want, bring it back to board if you want or whatever, but it's, it's hard to discuss it if it's actually part, not part of the agenda, so. All right. So do I hear a motion to approve the treasurer's report and financials? I'll make the motion. Do I hear a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I will abstain just because I just.
Any opposed? Okay, discussion action on invoices to be paid. Jared, yeah.
I first.
All right. Let's look at those. Anybody got any questions on those?
Did we just receive?
Yeah, the ones, yes, correct.
Why does that keep happening?
Because we get bills that come in over the weekend and even yesterday and today that we need to get paid in. So it becomes, it comes after you've already received the initial report.
Thank you.
Anybody got any questions?
So we're just, we're just on the ATHs? Is that what we're on right now?
No, the invoice to be paid. We just need to approve them.
Oh, yeah, I was, you got to pay the bills.
Scott. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I will abstain again.
Okay. All right, so move on to committee reports. Vanguard Commission. We met, I was there, we met very briefly just to talk about who was going to sign checks during the transition of village president since Troy was leaving and he was the second signature. We came up with a plan for that and then the meeting was over. So nothing since then. No superintendent report tonight? Unless Matt wants to do it. No, I'm kidding. Fire district, Mary.
Uh, did not meet and they have canceled the next meeting until further notice.
Yeah. Dean Iowa.
That would have been Troy.
That would have been Troy, so. Economic Development.
Do you know where the next one is?
No, since the committees are getting reassigned, we'll get one on the books.
Dean Iowa is third Thursday.
Yeah.
Economic Development. They didn't meet since our last one, have they?
No.
No. Emergency Management has not met. EMS.
We haven't met and our next meeting should be May fourteenth unless I.
Okay. Library.
Um, library met on April twenty-first and they discussed, we discussed. President of Library didn't, wasn't there, so that didn't happen. There was discussion about the library trustee's appointments, reappointments, the role of email addresses and communication procedures. And discussion on trustee communication and conversations, the email chain that we discussed here also. Email phone communications between the library board president and the village board president. And it was their understanding that there would be a conversation with the village board on this side regarding Mitch's conversation with Gary. Gary gave his report, library board side of the conversation that they had. And library board policy updates. Everybody's just waiting for Bailey to jump in, get her feet firmly planted and launched. So that was it. And the next, library board meeting, strangely enough. I did not write down off the top of your head is May eighteenth. Eighteenth, that's still sound about right. May eighteenth is that.
All right, and then I'm going to take the same amount of time because it's part of the library of talk about our conversation we had. I reached out to Gary and he reached back. We talked about some concerns we both had back and forth. Some communication issues, maybe some trust issues that we're going to work on. We talked about obviously the taping thing and it was not a committee thing. It was talked about during the whole board, but was not a committee. Gary did clarify that with me. I couldn't remember that for sure, but I also talked about some concerns I had with the taping, if it was a policy and it hadn't gone through legal. I, we really affirmed our commitment to try to make this work and especially with the new library board director coming on. We need to do everything we can to make her successful. What else we talked about, Gary? We talked about a lot.
We talked about a lot and since you asked me, I think the biggest point I made was failing success is my highest priority.
Me too. I agree.
And I'm going to do everything I can to make that happen. I'm going to argue just to touch with Mary. Mary said she wants her, you know, find a really good footing. I want her to find a footing. I want her to be walking forward.
Yep, I agree.
The library board, the relationship with the village support, with the school going away, I think this library is going to become more important to this village. And so I want to give her every tool that she needs to be successful here.
Yep.
And that is something that I went over three, four, five, six, a number of times.
Yep, yeah.
But yeah, that's, that, that's the big message that I wanted to communicate to you and I'm pretty sure you've heard.
I heard you very clear and, and you know my commitment too, so I. And obviously you have a new library board representative and she knows absolutely nothing
Very well.
about the library board. We've had no conversations. She did ask me if there was some conflict in there and I told her that's why I wanted her to be there, to be a neutral party and to learn going forward. And that's part of gaining trust, so. We have not had any conversations about any problem with the library board. I thought that was the only fair way to do it. And I think we should work from there. So I'm excited. Welcome.
Thank you.
Public Works. We have not had a public works because we had it and it was reported at the last meeting. Matt, do you have something?
Um, just a couple of things I've got. The three of us took a wastewater class today. You can see that the trunks were cut down in Veterans Park and I do have a stump brazier rented for May seventeenth. That should be coming. We'll just do it with our own bucket. There's a couple other stumps in town that we're going to take care of, the ATV signs. We're getting closer on that. I did get a copy of the DOT permit for that, so that needs to be signed. And then I got quotes for signage, so I've got to finalize those. Clary Avenue, the street project, concrete repairs were made, which were part of a punch list item. They are scheduled this Friday to do the milling with final payment being done Monday. So it'll be just a couple of items for the, their punch list that they have to take care of recently, one chunk of storm sword fight and such. New Moore came. Scott did a couple, couple terms with the new Moore. Fall started today, getting back with, with the crew and doing our grass cutting. And we had a lift station on Center Street, had one motor we sent in for repairs to have bearings replaced. And it just so happened that we put the backup motor in, that one was fine. And the second motor down there happened to have a fail starter at the same time, so that is up and running. And my backup motor for that lift station is being repaired, so.
Unfucker factor.
Anybody want to hear? Just got a triplicate safety. I bet it happens all the time when light goes on. So I guess that'll be something with Public Works is going forward, making sure we have another motor for the other lift stations since they are two different phases. And hopefully at some point getting generators.
Other difference, why, yes, four eighty ones, okay.
Um, other than that, nothing else to discuss unless anyone has any questions.
Maybe we're going to ask the same thing. What did you sell? And what did you get?
I almost got some surplus.
Yeah.
Um, so there was the lawnmower.
Oh, the number one?
John Deere lawnmower that bought eleven thousand five hundred dollars. And Shelley did explain that how on the budget it kind of looks a little goofy right now until she can get that reclassified.
Carryover.
Yes, thank you. The two thousand six four fifty was sold also. I almost got some surplus that bought nineteen thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. We had some picnic tables that.
Did they bring anything?
What's that?
Did they bring anything?
They did. I think it was like two thousand.
They were junk.
Yeah, yeah. Two thousand dollars, those were brought in from Rod Norris. $2,000 of those were brought in from Rod Norris's days. And they just sat behind the shaft. So yes, $2,075 for picnic tables. At least had some items that they sold. I think it was a speedboard.
Yeah, an old.
I normally got a bicycle to get rid of at some point. Yeah, so.
The light bar.
Ruffleizer.
Yes, light bar sold. Ruffleizer.
Ruffleizer went to the historical society.
Oh, did it?
Yep. Yeah.
Stuff that goes into our coffers.
Yep, so if you look at the miscellaneous revenue on the reports I gave you in your general fund, you're going to see it's in the wrong account. I moved it today. But it's like $32,000 sitting in that, where that is sitting.
And did we hit our reserve on everything?
Yes, the lawnmower was set for $10,000, so we got $1,500 more than asking for that. The truck was set for $10,000. We got $9,000 more than what we wanted out of that. So we did very well.
Very good. I just want to hear the happy news about first dump.
Yeah, and just out of abundance of caution for the stumps, are they in a condition where there are kids not going to fall and get hurt on them? Or do we need to put like, do you have a prop, tay or something?
Right, no.
Yeah.
They're all tied up. I mean, the kid's going to have to jump and then step off. I mean, it's kind of the same risk as I would say going on the playground, kind of play at your own risk type thing unless the board feels we should tape them off.
They're already jumping all over them, and they're already doing...
They're going to do it anyway.
Yeah.
And that's, and I was thinking more from a liability perspective.
No, I was going to cover it on the park liability thing, but I hear your words. No, it's down to the, and they're already launching all over them.
Okay.
Yeah, I forget. The globe, you had brought that up at the last village board meeting. Sean ordered that, the $900 globe, but it is what it is. There's no shields or shrouds that can be placed on them that he's aware of.
And it's below our insurance deductible.
Which is how high is the damage? So just a comment on that, too. I bumped into somebody from Vanguard today, and he said that when they replace it, they'll try and remember to look in it and see what might have caused it.
Yeah, by chance, there was a rock or something.
Something like, you know, was it an errant ball? I mean, this is a ball field, and the kids play in it, so it could have been anything. But I never saw any glass.
Well, let's figure that out when it comes, so let's move on. Scott, did you have something else?
No, that was covered.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Parks.
Did you, so Parks, I'm sorry, public works was set for May 17th, I believe.
Correct, at 1 o'clock.
At 1.
Was that a different?
Well, I guess new committee, right? I'm all.
Correct, so.
I'll check in whenever you want.
Yeah. Parks.
There was not a Parks.
Okay. Police.
There was a meeting, I believe, April 14th. We talked, well, we talked about the breaking and ball damage, and let's see, and I'm getting that stuff done, so I have no idea what happened to either of them. I don't believe the breaking and ball damage has been figured out yet. I was talking to Ross Suvanian, and here it is. National Night Out is going to be this year, and it's Dane County. It's like all Dane County, so they should have everything there at the high school. It'll be August 3rd. There's no time yet, but, which also conflicted that board meeting.
Yeah.
I don't know, we'll talk about that later.
Might have postponed it, huh?
It'd be nice if we could. Yeah, found an old ruffleizer in the basement that they took to the park society, yes. And we also had a bicycle a long time ago that we will probably surplus.
To cleanse his ruffleizer.
It's historic, yeah.
We're just going over lighting and signage in the village for safety items. Hope you notice any lights out or anything that might need to be signed. If you could bring it to the police committee. Was loaded? Oh, the back door, we have issues with the back door swallings again, so I don't know.
We looked at awnings for the two doors in the past by due signs, and then of course, due signs sold. But it still won't cover the door handles that heat up and...
Yeah, it's actually the lock. He doesn't turn in it or something doing it swallows. So we have to be real.
Trying to figure out a good solution.
Wait for winter?
So they didn't kind of set a meeting for May 12th at 5:00 PM?
Everyone will get an email and, okay.
Any questions for James? Any other business may be brought before the board for future agendas?
Yes, I got one item. We'll have to put the Clary Avenue project's final payment on there.
Yep, that was one of those things that is going to ring up. We will have a final pay request at June's meeting. Of course, the Ellers' presentation on refinancing our debt.
Are they going to be, they meeting that June?
Monday.
Evening will be locked.
Anybody else got anything they'd like to talk about, put on the agenda? All right. Meeting announcements.
Do we have to vote on that stuff right now? The future?
The pay request.
That's actually a pay request. That comes from our engineer. That'll be on there. He was just bringing it up.
Yep, I just wanted to make sure it got on because...
He can't really...
The MRP needs to be done by...
And then do we have to vote on the Ellers' presentation?
Nope.
I have a question on the Parks Committee. At a previous session, it was brought up about potentially treating some ash trees in town and trying to figure that out. And it was decided not to go down the route of paying or, you know, having a private company do it, but seeking a public volunteer. And I had volunteered to do that, but it was kind of in limbo as to whether or not that would be allowed. Now I'm a board member, so I don't know if I'm allowed to act as a public volunteer, too.
It went to public works.
Went to public works. I think it kind of got axed because I think it was, some of them are too far to be gone. And do we just put new trees in or do we try to spend money on?
Yeah, no, it's one of those things. If it goes a year, it's reminders.
Yeah, so a lot of it, I mean, basically, you know, the asphalt had been here at Black Earth. It's trees are toast already. There's no sense in wasting the...
Wasting the time and effort, too. I didn't know what, I didn't know what state they were in, so.
Yeah, yeah. I think they've been here for a couple of years already, so it's just, they're gone. They're past. They're probably halfway up the state by now.
Yep.
All right.
I thought that the report said, though, that if it's less than 50% infected, it can be reversed.
I don't know, but that's not about next agenda, so let's...
Oh, I thought you just brought up.
Yeah, he did. I was going to move it on anyways, but unless you, are you talking to put it back on the next agenda?
Yeah, I think I need to hear it.
Public Works kind of axed it already.
It was more asking for an update, a pass, discussion on it.
I think we would like to ask for it to appear on the next agenda if anybody agrees because one of the biggest points on our survey is that the mature trees in our village are a huge draw for the people here. And if we're going to lose our trees, we need to have a plan. But then I'd also like to hear from professionals that does it.
Talked with...
Well, actually, this is just about, if you want it back on the agenda.
If we want it on the agenda, it should go to Parks.
Issue, because it already went through them and it kind of felt the same way we did.
So as far as getting new trees and stuff like that, that's a Parks item as well versus starting a board if you want to start at a Parks club at first.
So how do you send it down to Parks?
Talk to Parks.
Yeah, I'll make sure we can get it on next Parks meeting.
All right, meeting announcement, board review, May 13th at 6:00 PM. And village board is June 1st at 6:00 PM.
Is that a hard June 1st? My son's birthday.
Probably have a quorum.
Not going to need, anybody else have a conflict on June 1st?
All right. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
It is the day after Memorial Day. Yeah, and we're closed up. Anybody else have a conflict about the day?
I don't think we should just move meetings. Because the public knows when they're at, and it kind of confuses them, so. I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? All right, thanks, everybody.
Dean, I need you. Carrie, I need your signature.
I'm going to talk with you.